Good evening. If everybody could take their seats.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to the September 23, 2024, second and final public hearing to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate and fiscal year 2025 final annual budget. This meeting format is hybrid. Please silence all phones for the duration of the meeting. I will now call this public hearing to order. Please look at your screens of your devices where an image of the flag is displayed if you are appearing virtually and otherwise, please stand if you're able to do so. And join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Present.
Director Hartfield?
Present.
Director Henderson? Director Hobbs?
Present.
Director King?
Present.
Director Knight?
Present.
Director McAlfeetrick?
Present.
Director Mechanic?
Present.
Director Miller? Director Myers?
Here.
Director Schisler?
Here.
Chair Viera?
Here.
Director Williams?
Here.
Director Woolstall?
Here.
You do have a quorum, madam, or sir chair.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. A quorum appears to be physically present at the Hillsborough Transit Authority here at 1201 East 7th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33605. And the rest of the board members, if any, are participating via communication media technology. There are documents that summarize the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate and fiscal year 2025 final annual budget available online and at the meeting. These documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing. The first action will be approval of the minutes from the September 9, 2024 fiscal year 2025 tentative millage rate and fiscal year 2025 tentative annual budget. Public hearing. Are there, if there are no revisions or corrections, I heard Board Director Knight do a motion.
Second.
Second by Board Director Myers. A roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson? Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlfeetrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller? Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Woolstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Next, we will consider adoption of the following resolutions. First, Resolution Number R2024-09-30, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the final fiscal year 2025 millage rate of .5000, which is more than the rollback rate of .4779 mils by 4.62% and providing for an effective date. And Resolution Number R2024-09-31, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2025 annual budget of $188,701,786 and providing an effective date. This public hearing will be conducted as follows. Hart staff will present the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate. Hart staff will present an overview of the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget. The board will then open the floor for citizen comment regarding only the final millage rate and/or final budget. Speaker comments are limited to three minutes. So again, I emphasize to the public, if you're going to be speaking today at the budget hearing, it is to be only for the budget and the millage rate. And we have a meeting after this. And citizen comments, following citizen comments, the board will then take action to move for approval of any necessary changes. Two resolutions will be presented to the board for approval. The board will approve the required resolutions, adopting the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate first, and then adopting the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget in that order. Staff will now present, if you would please, the fiscal year 2025 millage rate.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, board members. This is the second required public hearing in the fiscal year 2025 millage rate and fiscal year 2025 annual budget. Notifications of this hearing were published in the Tampa Bay Times on September 18, 2024, the Florida Central, and the La Ceta on September 20, 2024. The fiscal year 2025 not to exceed millage rate was certified at the July 15, 2024 board meeting and provided to the property appraiser on August 2, 2024 and conform with the state law. The fiscal year 2025 final millage rate of .5000 mils is the same as the adopted fiscal year 2024 millage rate of .5000 mils. The fiscal year 2025 millage rate of .5000 mils is more than the rollback rate of .4779 mils by 4.62%. Melanie Williams, Director of Budget and Grants, will present the FY 2025 final millage rate.
Good evening. Melanie Williams, Director of Budgets and Grants. Today, I would provide a summary of the historical and proposed budgeted revenues, the historical millage rate and rollback rate, and then the board resolution. This chart provides the historical and proposed budgeted revenue over a 10-year period. For FY 25, based on the millage rate of .5 mils, it is estimated that $81,806,798 of revenue will be generated. By statute, Hart can only budget 95% of the avalon proceeds. Therefore, our FY 25 avalon budget is $77,716,458. This represents a 6.6 increase over FY 24. This chart provides the millage rate and rollback rate. For FY 25, the .5 millage rate is 4.62% above the rollback rate of .4779. The rollback rate is the tax rate that produces the same amount of tax dollars as the previous year. Next is the resolution to adopt the final FY 25 millage rate. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board of directors or any further comments from our CEO, Drainville? Okay, there appearing none. And I see we have Director Mechanic and Director Henderson. If you guys need anything, just put the thumbs up or whatever it may be. Next, staff will now present the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget.
The fiscal year 2025 final annual budget is $188,701,786, which represents an increase of 18.6% from the fiscal year 2024 annual budget of $159,149,766. The fiscal year 2025 annual budget consists of the following components. Final operating budget, $117,305,565. Final capital budget, $71,396,221, for a total final annual budget of $188,701,786. The annual budget is, was discussed with the Board and Finance and Audit Committee during meetings held from May through August 2024. Melanie Williams will present the, on the FY 2025 final budget.
Good evening again. On September 9, I presented the FY 25 tentative budget. During that presentation, there was a few questions about projects included in the capital budget. Since then, Mr. Drainville has responded to those questions in email. So today, I would provide a summary of the operating statistics, staffing level, operating revenues and expenses, capital revenues and expenditures, capital project list, combined annual budget, and then finally, the board resolution. This provides the operating statistics for FY 25. The total for all modes for revenue miles is $9,187,197. Total revenue hours, 728,180. Ridership, $14,360,847. The FY 25 staff includes 814.75 FTEs. This includes 615.75 ATUs, 144 nine bargaining employees, and 55 Teamsters. The next few slides summarizes the operating and capital revenues and expenses. We have the operating revenues by source at $117,305,565. The largest revenue source is the avalon tax revenue. Then we have operating expenses by category at $117,305,565. This is a balanced budget. The largest expense category is the personnel cost, which includes the salaries, wages, and fringe benefits. The capital revenues by source is $71,396,221. Capital expenses by project category is $71,396,221 to balance the budget. The next few slides provide detail of the various projects within each category. We have the vehicles and maintenance totaling at $25,318,162. Facilities in construction totals $24,132,991. Technology, $12,155,825. We have bus stops and shelters at $8,388,038. Planning and studies, $800,000. Safety and security at $601,205, with a total capital budget of $71,396,221. This is the combined annual budget. It includes the operating budget and the capital budget for a total of an annual budget of $188,701,786. Next is the resolution to adopt the final fiscal year 2025 annual budget. And this concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else, Mr. Drainville, from you? Thank you. Any questions from board members at all or comments? Yes, sir. Vice Chair Woolstall, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Drainsville, did your team execute every single efficiency possible to ensure that we removed as much waste as possible from this budget?
Absolutely. I've looked at this very thoroughly. I've looked at every contract, made all the efficiency we could.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, board, and thank you for that. Next, we will take public comments regarding the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate and fiscal year 2025 annual annual budget. For those of you who wish to speak, I ask to you, please, limit your comments to three minutes. Again, we are having a meeting after this, on which, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mandell, there is separate public comment on the subsequent meeting. This is relegated only to the budget and the millage rate. Is there anyone? Oh, I'm sorry. We have here Connor Darkin. Connor used to work with my office as a part-time staffer. Nice guy.
My name is Connor Darkin, and I've been using Hart on and off for over a decade, starting in, 15 years total, starting in 2009. I don't drive a car for reasons relating to eyesight and depth perception as well as because of the high cost it makes necessary. So I rely on a carpool for most mornings, and every evening, I rely on Hart by way of the Marion Transit Center after leaving my work in Tampa's Edgcombe Courthouse on the 275 Alex Route all the way up to West Lutapo in Pasco. Occasionally, I use the same bus route in early mornings to get from West Lutapo to my work. I very much approve of funding the Hart Route 1, courtesy of the City of Tampa, because I know many people do make use of it who can't access any other way of reliable transportation. I meet such people every day. If this experiment currently being funded by the City of Tampa, but it only proves, by the City of Tampa, but it only proves eventually and provably successful, hopefully, it can be replicated in other areas. Knowing how many areas we have, I would not presume to say what one that should be. I have one urgent request for this board's attention and proper funding. Many of the various Hart stops across the city, Marion Transit Center to the University Area Transit Center, to the Bargrass Park and Ride, exist in a state of such minimalism that they are essentially nothing more than a single sign, where people stand around in all possible weather, including horrific thunderstorms and monstrous heat. Being someone who has been soaked to the bone on numerous occasions, while also being terrified at the bus shelter itself, the lightning rod, I ask how this can exist in the lightning capital of the world. At many Hart stops, there is neither seating nor any protection from rain and sun. This is not disability friendly for a city that calls itself autism friendly, but it is, all right, skin cancer friendly, and it is extremely detrimental in this age of extreme climate. Olivia George of the Tampa Bay Times has documented a few of the, a few of such stops that are egregiously dangerous. I would ask this board to think of elderly and disabled riders and how you can make such environments better for them. If you are not either disabled or elderly, think of yourself without a car. Such events happen all the time. If you don't have a car and you don't have any way of accessing Uber, then the bus is your only route, and you will not enjoy sitting at a sign that is nothing more than a sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public comment on the budget or the final millage rate? Okay, I'll move forward if I may. To the extent there is board discussion or any recommended changes to the final millage rate or budget based upon our public comment, I would ask for consideration of these changes. Appearing none, I will go forward. Public comment is hereby closed. We will now vote on the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate. After the vote on the final millage rate, we will then vote on the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget. The resolutions will now be read. The resolutions are as follows. First, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes, adopting the final fiscal year 2025 millage rate of .5000, which is more than a rollback rate of .4779 mils by 4.62% and providing for an effective date. Next, Resolution Number R2024-09-31, a resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2025 annual budget of $188,701,786 and providing for an effective date. State statutes require that we approve the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate before we approve the fiscal year 2025 annual annual budget. Accordingly, we will read each resolution separately. Is there first a motion to adopt or amend the fiscal year 2025 final millage rate?
So moved.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion by Board Member Hartfield, seconded by Board Member Myers, if we may, and roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Yes.
Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlfeetrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller? Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Woolstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board. Second, is there a motion to adopt or amend the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget? Board Member Myers has the motion, and who's second? Second by Board Member Schisler. A roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Yes.
Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlfeetrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Woolstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, board. Any comments before I close this budget hearing? I would think not. This public hearing was held in compliance with Florida statutes today, September 23, 2024, to consider the fiscal year 2024 final millage rate and the fiscal year 2025 final annual budget for Hillsborough Transit Authority. This concludes the public hearing. Okay. And may I just, does anybody need to take a break or anything? Or I would assume not, but, okay. If I may, I'm just going to go through with the regular board meeting. Okay. Good evening. I am Councilmember Louis Viera, Chair of the Hart Board of Directors. Again, please silence all electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Welcome to the September 23, 2024 Board of Directors' regular meeting, which is now called to order. This meeting format is hybrid with board directors physically present at the Hart Administrative Office at 1201 East 7th Avenue, Florida Conference Room, and participating via communication media technology. Again, let's do it again. Let's, join me if you are able to do so in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Here.
Director Hartfield?
Here.
Director Henderson?
Present.
Director Hobbs?
Yep.
Director King?
Here.
Director Knight? Director McAlfeetrick?
Here.
Director Mechanic?
Here.
Director Miller? Director Myers?
Here.
Director Schisler?
Here.
Chair Viera?
Here.
Director Williams?
Here.
Director Woolstall?
Here.
You do have a quorum, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is public comment. Before we open public comment, I would like to read the following statement into the record regarding public comment and the parameters of it. Hart Board Council also has a statement for board members, and the statement is as follows. The Hart Board of Directors welcomes comments from citizens about any issue of concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. When addressing the board, comments shall not be directed personally against a board member or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between board members, staff, and the public. The board has set aside a 30-minute period for public comments in compliance with Hart Board Policy 210 Subsection 4A. Speakers were able to sign up to speak either in person or virtually at meetings by contacting the board administrator before 5:00 PM yesterday. Speakers were also given an opportunity to sign up in person today. I will call on speakers by name in the order in which your requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Again, up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Ms. Mandell, do you have a statement for board members, ma'am?
Yes. At this time, I just want to remind board members that if you do receive comments that are directly relating to pending litigation or a pending administrative matter, that you refrain from commenting on those since they are in pending litigation mode. And that's all the comments I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a general point of order.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Are we safe to begin public comment prior to the advertised time?
I'm told, and I looked on the agenda, and admittedly, it's probably written not as well as I would have liked, but the way it was advertised is to begin immediately after the previous. I would suggest that when we do that, the next time, we put an "or" in there, but other than that, I'm comfortable we can proceed forward, given that it was an immediately after the, 6 o'clock or immediately after the, the budget meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, sir. The first person who I have here is Mr. Peter Shanahan, who I believe is remote.
I do not believe he is on the line, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Gail Dahlbeck.
Tell me when to go.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Gail Dahlbeck, and I've been employed at Hart for 24 years in the payroll department. I'm retiring next month, but I'm here to address a critical issue affecting retirees, including myself. As many of you are aware of, many of us cannot access our retirement funds from Empower due to a clause in the contract that was overlooked during the transition to Mission Square. Empower's contract states that if Hart leaves, funds in the general account must roll over at 20% per year for five years. That's, it's called a 6-5 payout. This means we will not have full access to our retirement savings until then. This key factor was missed despite concerns raised by myself, HR, and others during implementation meetings. Emails between Matt from HR, Mission Square, and myself show confusion about this rollover process. HR even requested a copy of Empower's contract, which I assumed was sent to Legal or Gallagher for review. Despite this, the transition moved forward without fully informing employees about the impact. We are not blaming Empower. They are simply enforcing their contract. The issue is that Hart did not do their due diligence in thoroughly reviewing the contract and clearly communicating the impact to the employees. Hart should have explained in simple terms, if you're close to retirement... If you're close to retirement and you will need access to your money, you must move your funds from the general account to a low-risk account. That way, all of your funds will roll over to Mission Square, and you'll have immediate access. How hard would that have been to communicate that key point in simple, direct terms? This statement could have prevented the entire problem. Heart will say they held sessions to explain the transition, but after attendant, I was left confused. Per Heart's guidance, we were told to schedule individual meetings with Stephen Rohan from Gallagher. Unsure of what to do and knowing I was retiring soon, I sought expert advice. Stephen Rohan told me, along with others who were also retiring soon, that we didn't need to do anything with our general funds. Based on his professional advice, I believed that I would have access to my funds. I trusted Gallagher and Heart to guide me correctly, especially as a longtime dedicated employee. I never expected to be misled by the experts Heart hired to represent the best interest of the employees during this transition. I question why Heart made the decision to even transition over to Mission Square. What was the benefit? Per my knowledge, there were no employee complaints regarding Empower. I can provide emails that show the confusion and lack of clarity throughout this process if needed. Let me ask you, how would you feel after working for decades, saving for retirement, only to be told you won't have full access to the money for five years?
Thank you, ma'am.
For some of us, that's time we may not have.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you, Ms. Dahlbeck. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I just, Mr. Chair? Can we get a copy of what you're reading?
Yes, yes. I gave packets out. But I can also, I can also give. Okay. But that's not included, but I can also make copies and give those to you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can email us a copy if you'd like.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you. Next is Mr. Ricardo Fernandez.
Good evening, board. My name is Ricardo Fernandez. I was a master mechanic for 35 years with Heart. Not to piggyback of what she said, this issue is between Empower and Heart. Each one is blaming each other for what's happening. That Heart, retiree family, and my family would have access to our 457B money at 20% for the next five years. I called both Mission Square and Empower around October of 2023, well-sufficient time to be able to do something about it. I was told that if I was in the general fund and I was getting ready to retire, that would be a qualifying event. I didn't have to do nothing. That's why I didn't do nothing. I went by their expertise. I even called Heart HR Department. They told me to call Empower and talk to them. I did that. Like I said, they told me I didn't have to do anything. It would be a qualifying event. But after retiring in April, started calling Empower around May and was told I could not get my money, and I had to call the plan owner to get answers, which that's Heart. I'm not here to throw blame, but I'm in the same place I was four months ago. This has put a financial burden on my family and me because this money I was planning on retiring. I am sure that Heart can work with Empower and come to an agreement so that my family and the Heart retiree family can get their money, and I hope the board can come together and help us.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you, Mr. Fernandez.
Alan Brewster. I do regular research on transit agencies, and there are 80-plus transit agencies in the United States. Heart is ranked 49th out of the 80, and I ask myself, why? I've been here 10 years, and Heart has been in that same place, that same holding pattern for 10 years, 49th. And I come to the conclusion, it's the leadership that's holding them there. It's not the lack of funds. It's the leadership, the decisions that they make. You need choice riders on these buses, and what you have now is not going to propel Heart to move up as a premier transit agency. You need choice riders. I've expressed to the scheduling department to bill outward, not to the transit centers. Bill outward to the choice riders. They won't do it. They won't even fix the times on the routes. It's not consistent. They keep changing the routes and the times every three months. Why would, if I was a choice rider, would want to ride the bus? And it's constantly changing every three months. This is why this transit agency is at the bottom, because of the decisions that is being made. A lot of people that's on the bus, they don't have a choice. They had to bite their tongue, grit their teeth, and deal with the lateness. Routes being redlined, bus not showing up for two hours. You board members that rode, did the ride alone, you didn't get that effect because somebody stepped in and said, plug that route. You didn't get that. That's what you need to experience to know what these riders are going through. Right after that, that week that the board members rode the bus, there was USF moving in. The Route 3348 was 30 minutes late, and they did not plug that route. That's wrong to the ridership. That is so wrong. But that's why Heart, this transit agency, is 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Brewster. We appreciate you, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rafael Vasquez, and I work for Heart since 2004 as a streetcar motorman. Okay, I'm supposed to retire now in December, and, but I think I'm going to have to work a little longer because the money that I've been putting in my 457B is not going to be available for me. I've been put in, let's say I started with $50 every check, try to push the most money I can so when I can retire, enjoy my money. I mean, that only makes sense. And I had my money first. It's been in different companies, like Mission, Empower, what's the other one? And it was no problem, okay? When they changed company, they changed my whole money to another company, and, and no problem, right? So now Mission came, so I thought it was still going to be no problem neither. But now I found, find out that, well, even human resources told me if I retired, I will get my total money from Mission and Empower. But now they're telling me that I got to wait five years. They only send 20% to Mission, so I got to wait four more years to get the rest of my money. So, so you put yourself in my shoes. That's my retired money. That's, that sounds like illegal. You know, what kind, what kind of deal Heart did with this company, and not in our benefits? So what about now, if I were going to retire in December, I'm going to have to work another year to have a little more money so I can do my dreams, you know, buy a house in Mexico, whatever I want to do with it. Right? So I feel like Heart should, if it was something in the contract was wrong, they should renegotiate for the best of us people that we about to retire. I'm supposed to retire now in December. I'm, I'm 67 years old, okay? So what I'm supposed to be, 71, 72, a part of debt, so I get my whole money? That doesn't make sense. So I appreciate the board, they can look into this. That problem, I have it, and a bunch of other coworkers too, okay? And, and the big problem is, we work here in the streetcar, and Mission, they went to 21st, and they, they were there available for questions, but they never came here to, to Eboard to talk to us. So we not really get the whole information. We don't get the chance to ask Mission questions to clarify. So that's, that's, that's not fair.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosado. The last name that I have is Karen Peoples. I saw her. Oh, there you go. Take your time, ma'am.
Sure, my love. Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Peoples, as you all know. I first want to come and tell you that on the Bus 5, 19, Bus 1968, Driver 5339, on Bus 5, that's Ms. Shepherd, she did an A-plus compliment for me because of the fact of how she treated a lady in a wheelchair. She was very kind. And now, what I want to get into is that I heard that some of you took a bus ride on Bus 33. Whoopie do. Shame on you. You should be riding a whole lot more buses than this. I brought a box of cookies for you all, but really, I'm taking them back. But my thing is that you all got to understand, we as riders, we're the ones suffering out here. The drivers and the staff, middle-class staff down, you need to do better by them. Come on now, these people back here and out there, they are working extra hard for the services that this community have for the riders. You have all walks of people riding out here. People with children, people handicapped, people of all different walks. You have got to do better, must do better. And I'm praying, because there's a high power that's going to make it get better. And here's another thing. COVID-19 pain, y'all need to come up with that, too. Come on now, bring it up. You have got to understand, you all are not out there doing the job, but they're out there doing the job. If we make it better by help, come to this board and make it better for the staff, make it better for those customer service, to all the people that work in customer service, A-plus to them as well. I want you to understand your staff deserve better. They shouldn't have to come here and beg and plead and beg and plead and beg and plead so many times in order for it to get better. It has to get better. This is a community effort. This is a community business. You are running a business. The business must get better in order for me, my mother, and everybody else to be able to ride comfortably. Now, we're going into the holidays. I want some of you all to be safe as well. The weather, the weather's going to get bad this week, but when you be saying your prayers, make sure you do right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peoples. We appreciate you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, there appearing none. We will move forward. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I would like to address the comments regarding, excuse me, regarding employees who retire. It's not something that we need to overlook as a board. And the reason why I say that, I retired from Hillsborough County Government in 2013. I had no issues when it was time for me to get my 457 checks and when it should start. And that's a call that I made, but hearing from our employees today, that is not the case. So what I'm going to ask, if we can look into the agreement between the party, if we have to break the agreement so that these employees can get their retirement benefits, they have worked, they deserve it, and there's no reason why we need something in our contract says five years. I don't know if anyone received a bonus or what have you. That need to be stricken. If Heart needs to join Hillsborough County in contact, the county's HR to see how we can do this so that we don't have that kind of language going forward. It's just unnecessary. No one need to be penalized when you're paying into a fund to receive your, your retirement benefits. And you count on your county, your retirement benefits as you're drawing near to retirement. You look forward to those extra dollars in your social security check. Ask me, I'm at that point. I'm officially retired. Okay? So, Mr. Dranefield, what could we do? Can we break that contract? Can you look into breaking the contract to make sure that these employees who are scheduled to be retired this year can receive their funding?
Commissioner Myers, we couldn't agree with you more. You know, we're very sympathetic. We've been working on this issue for months to see whatever, whatever avenue we could take, you know, HR, and then legal, our legal department's been really looking. And, and I don't, I think we're very limited to what we can do. I would, I would ask Ms. Viera to come up, and she's been working with the, the vendor for months now, just give a quick briefing on, if that's even possible, what are our options? I know we met with Chair Viera Friday.
And beforehand, if I may, I mean, let's, let's very briefly address this, but what I would suggest if the board agrees is that a motion be done for a briefing on what can be done. I have been looking into this several hours and speaking with staff because I obviously agree with your sentiments 100% on that. So very briefly, and then I, I would support a motion for a briefing as soon as possible on what we can do because I, the thing speaks for itself.
Good evening. Brenda Bailey, Director of Legal Services. I guess before I give a brief synopsis of where we are legally, I think you should hear from the HR director as far as where we are and what the issue really is.
And again, let's make it very quick, because again, I'm going to vote for, if you do a motion, I will support it 100%. Just, and I, and I would encourage board members to reach out individually before, because again, the situation speaks for itself.
Good evening. Daniel Brito, Director of HR. As we stand today, Brenda, myself, and my whole team in HR have attempted to, to remedy this problem. We understand the impact it has on our retirees. Unfortunately, the contract that was entered into by Heart in the Hartford, which was back in 1986, is, is the cause of this issue. And when Empower acquired the Hartford Plan, that contract transferred over. There was a comment about what was the rationale for the change. So Gallagher is our consultant for our retirement plan. They advised us that Heart was paying 135 basis points for the service. Their recommendation was that was above the industry standards. So a business decision was made to get out of that contract and move into Mission Square. As a result, we, we gained almost half of those basis points. So it was a business decision that was entered into by Heart to, to get out of the previous plan. As you all heard here, every participant was notified in writing. We had three informational sessions. We had two virtual sessions that allowed all participants, should you have a question about transferring your funds or what funds you should get.
And if I may, if I may, sir, let me cut you really quick, cut you off really fast. I don't want to go into the weeds right now because this issue wasn't noticed, et cetera. I mean, what I would, what I would suggest, if I may, is that I would be glad to support a motion that would have staff brief us on the, our ability to affect change on this issue, if any, and then to have board members briefed so that, again, we don't go into the weeds on an issue before being properly briefed. I know about it because I've been dealing with it, but again, I, and I, I obviously share your sentiments. That's why I support it.
I go ahead and make the motion.
Second.
Based on my comments?
Based on your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Board Member Myers, seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion?
I just. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I was going to wait until new business, and if anything, we need to do a motion to waive the rules, which is fine, just procedurally, but have, have we already decided that we can't do anything? Is that the brief, yes or no?
And maybe I can just, and Ms. Bailey has been involved, and she's briefed me as well, so maybe she can go ahead and comment on where they are legally.
Legally, unfortunately, there is nothing that we can do at this time. They reference a contract, but it's not necessarily a contract. It's actually the agreement with reference to the plan. This plan was established in 1986, and when they transferred from one administrator to the next, it triggered, it triggered this discontinuance process, which pays out over a term of five years. It makes payments on 20% increments over a period of five years. So that's where we are. over a period of five years. So that's where we are. So unfortunately, we have tried as best as possible to try to find ways to navigate it, but outside of taking, you know, other, other avenues, there's nothing that we can do with respect to the terms and the agreement that we made back in nineteen eighty-six with respect to this plan.
So, so the agreement lets them keep people's money longer for investing
Exactly.
to benefit themselves more?
Exactly.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm going to support it. I was going to, and wait, mister, and
Board Member Mechanic, wait up. I, I see Board Member Henderson, then Board Member Mechanic, and then Board Member Williams. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'm, I'm obviously in support of hearing more just government moves slow. I was going to offer some ambassadorial work if have, if we haven't already contacted Empower. And if they're just outright feuding it, I'd obviously like to know everything about that contract so we can expeditiously get away from such a company that would take advantage of people in their retirement years. And I hope that they're watching and listening to this. So I'll, I obviously support it, but I can't wait to hear whether or not we can get away from them as quickly as possible if it is true.
We are. We have already moved away from them, and that's the reason why we are here.
Yep. And, and again, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Board Member Wosel. It is, it is outrageous and, and it's, it angers me, what's happened. Board Member Henderson, then Board Member Mechanic, then Board Member Williams, then King, and Knight. I'm sorry. I'll do Knight then King. There you go. And, and let's move forward with comments, folks, because we have an agenda tonight. So go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering, and maybe this is for our attorney, and this is, while I have great sympathy for this situation, which is really incredible to even hear it, how is it, in terms of the board's responsibility and us addressing this, is this something that we should stay away from, just like the situation with the union contract and the dispute regarding, you know, their pay? I'm just trying to understand, if we obligated not to be involved and not to comment on that, why are we diving into this? If you can just speak on that, if there's a difference that allows us to move forward, I would like to know.
Yes, ma'am. I will say, this is not specifically pending litigation, although I believe if we try to breach a contract, that could go in that direction. I think the best approach at this point is, I think a motion is on the floor to bring this back for just more information and potentially have staff contact members ahead of time so that they can know some of the specifics. But what I'm also hearing out of some of the comments that came from Board Member Wosel is, and maybe that's also some of the conversations, is if there's an opportunity to move away from these particular existing plans. And that is a question I don't know that I have the answer to, or I don't know if you all have that answer, but I think it would be appropriate to put that on the agenda, to have that conversation moving forward. And I would certainly want us to stay away from a conversation that specifically discussed the breach of a contract.
Thank you. And as I understand the motion, it's not to direct action from the board. It's an inquiry on what we can do. So that, I think that would be consistent with what Councilwoman Henderson is inquiring. Board Member Mechanic, then I have Williams, Knight, and King. Anyone? Okay. And let's go. Go ahead, sir.
Well, this is very frustrating. This is the first I've heard of this, and then I'm told I can't talk about it. That doesn't sound like a good way to run a government. And I would just like to say that this seems to me to be totally unacceptable. And since all fingers seem to be pointing in the direction of we can't do anything, I think somebody ought to be talking about what is appropriate compensation to address the damages of these employees who are affected. We can't just sit back and say, oh, too bad. We're sorry. Somebody screwed up. That's not the answer. The answer is, we have to address the problem and do what we can to fix it. Now, I don't know what that is, because we're not allowed to talk about it, but I want somebody to be able to figure this out. Please.
Thank you, sir.
I think as counsel for the agency, I would like to caution you on any conversation with respect to any damages or, you know, making any, any, trying to make anybody whole. In this instance, Hart did absolutely nothing wrong. And in fact, we did everything in our power to try to address this issue. And in fact, each participant had notice of the change, had an opportunity to resolve the issue, to prevent them from being in this current instance. And I think we have to make sure that we're not using the boardroom as an opportunity to circumvent those things.
Well, the only reason those comments are surfacing is because we've all been kept in the dark. It might have been wise to have briefed us ahead of time, wouldn't it? I think it would have.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Knight. Board Member Williams, then, or Mechanic, I'm sorry. Board Member Williams. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My question is centered on new employees. When we bring new employees on, do, are we putting them back into the same program or plan, or did we create a new plan?
No, we're no longer with them. We're not with Empower anymore. We're with Mission Square now.
Okay. So this situation with Mission Square.
This was a transfer from an old plan to a new plan. And if you left those funds in the general fund and you didn't move, you didn't pick an investment, this was the cause of that.
I see. Thank you. So this, this is just a matter of
There's specific employees that this affected. This, this, this option was, was available to all employees. And if you moved your money in the timeline that was allowed, you wouldn't find yourself in this scenario.
Thank you.
Board Member Knight and Board Member King. Go ahead.
Thank you. And sorry to hear this for the first time, but sympathize with the, the, the team members who are going through this and have aspiration on retiring. I could look around this, this table and see or realize how many have retired, you know, leading up to this, and what you look forward to when you get ready to retire. I just happened after thirty-six and a half years with Tampa Electric, retired. And one of the people were in powerment that they switched to, but none of this here. I mean, this here is unbelievable to hear that. I'll just say that I think that, you know, even the board not getting involved or whatever, any support that we can do and can go around. So Empower ain't the, this is not the only place that I do business, but to do things right and appropriately, even in the past. To say that nothing can be done, I wouldn't buy that, I think. But putting, putting heads together and, and, and a policy support that this could be rectified, especially if you, you're ready to retire and you can't touch. I just don't believe that that's the way it should, that things, some great things can happen from this meeting and knowing resources, relationship.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Board Member King.
I, I share everyone's sentiments as to, I think, how we all feel about this situation. I think it's a terrible decision, situation for anyone have to be in. I think that where we are right now with, with what we're dealing with, we need to be careful about how we proceed because we don't want to prejudice anything that, that can or cannot be done. But I think we need to assess what the facts were at the time this contract was incepted and whether or not there was any material misrepresentation in the inception of this contract. And I think we also need to take a serious look at what the individual roles were on some of the participants, most particularly Gallagher and Associates.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Hobbs. I just had one quick question for you. Approximately, how many people are we talking about are caught up in this situation? Approximate.
We, unfortunately, because we don't longer, those, those employees are retired, we have very limited access to gathering any of that kind of information. The only ones we know of are the ones that have come forward.
And, and about how many is that?
I would say I've heard maybe about five cases.
Okay.
Somewhere around five.
Okay. Unless there's any further comment, we have a motion on the board. And anyone else? No one else? Okay. Good. Just making sure. And by the way, we have three other people who are here for public comment. We have a motion by Board Member Myers, seconded, I think, by Board Member Schisler.
King.
King. Excuse me. I'm sorry. And if you could repeat, I, I want to state, I know, I'll give you my understanding of what your motion is, is for staff to come back next month to discuss what this board can do in response to the complaints that we heard from employees as to not being able to recoup fully their retirement benefits.
Right.
Is that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Is that, and Mr., or Board Member King, that's, you're amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
With the briefing?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. And, and again, I would urge board members to get individual briefings beforehand to fully understand what's going on and everything, because obviously, it's a very emotional issue, obviously. And I, and by the way, I, oh, and if I may, just really quick, I decided to have a discussion on this because I wanted the employees who are here to let them know that we're looking at this, because obviously, it's deeply personal. Go ahead, ma'am.
And speaking of briefings, because we could have been informed, we had my briefing Friday on this issue. I just think any important issue that staff needs to bring before us, we should be informed during our briefings. You know, not to put you on the Scott, on the spot, Scott, but please inform me before, before the meeting, because when we hear from staff, it doesn't look good for you as our CEO, that our staff has to come and tell us what's going on. Okay? So just inform us of the briefings. There's a hot issue. That's why we have briefings, so we need to know what's going on at the same time. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Let's, unless if there's any further comments, let's have roll call, please.
Director Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson? Director Henderson? Thank you. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlfech?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Wosel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Chair.
Thank you very much. And I have a question. How much have we spent on, how many people have spoken in public comment? Just so that I stay in the rules. Four? One, two, three, four.
Four.
Eight. Okay. So by eight, we'll be two minutes over public comment. I'm fine with that. I don't know if anybody needs to, well, next person, so that we move forward. I'm, I'm sorry, what? It'll, it'll be, okay, then, then we're good. Dana Lazarus.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to speak about a different issue entirely. And to just introduce myself, my name is Dana Lazarus. I am an AICP certified planner. I am a public transit advocate. I studied, focused my studies on transportation planning for the purpose of social equity and equitable outcomes. I'm from the St. Pete area. I moved to Portland, Oregon, loved the public transit there, and actually moved back to try to advocate for public transit here and make this a better place for everybody to live. So in 2016, I joined the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Transportation Planning Organization. So I've been really involved here for almost ten years, eight years, in public, in transportation planning. So for about that long, I've been trying to figure out, how do we address our public transit issue? In 2017 about, I co-founded an organization called Transit Now Tampa Bay. And it was really just a discussion group. So we've been discussing the, like, current events about public transit and the, all for, all for transportation, transportation tax. We advocated for that. And we've just been really trying to kind of here and there address how we can improve public transportation here. And so we advocated for the fare-free Route One pilot project that the city of Tampa agreed to fund in this year's budget. So we're super excited about it. We are willing to go knock doors, let people along the route and businesses know that it's going to be fare-free, get people on the bus to try it, see what riding the bus is like, because a lot of people here haven't tried it. It's a cultural thing. A lack of reliability will, will also do that. Route One, I've ridden multiple times, and it's, I think, the most reliable route. It's never stranded me anywhere, which is, which is really great. So hopefully, we can get people on there to see that riding the bus is great and it can save you money. So we're going to continue to stick around Transit Now Tampa Bay. There is massive support, public support, for increasing funding for public transit in our area. And so we're going to continue to try to figure out how to do that and continue to let you guys know that there is support for that, however we can make that happen. So that's all I wanted to say is hello, and thank you for your service to this board. Public transit is just so important to everyone, from the people who rely on it and ride it, rely on it to survive, to get to work, to get to their jobs and the grocery store, everything, to get down here to do civic participation, all the way to the business owners who need their workers to be able to get to work. So it's just an all-encompassing issue. It serves everybody. And hopefully, we can continue to change that narrative and raise awareness.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lazarus. We appreciate you. Next is Tatiana Morales.
Good afternoon, Hart Board Members and fellow community members. My name is Tatiana Morales, and I'm here in support of fare-free Route One. The reason I actually started supporting public transit was because my dad had a stroke. And when you have a stroke, you can't drive. It takes away your ability. And for six months, seven years ago, and six months, two months ago, my dad cannot drive. And it really changed my perspective of how we serve our most vulnerable residents. And why I'm here in such strong support for fare-free Route One pilot is because it's the beginning of a future where we actually find innovative solutions to address Hart's critical lack of funding. This initiative isn't just about the transportation of our most vulnerable residents. It's about tackling one of our, our nation's greatest issues of our time, climate change. Making Route One fare-free will have a huge impact, especially for the residents who rely on public transit every day. For many people, even a small fare can be a barrier to accessing jobs, education, and essential services. By eliminating this cost, even just for some time, we provide more equitable access for everyone, particularly those who may be already financially stretched. This is a tangible step towards supporting our low-income neighbors and making Tampa a more inclusive city and Hillsborough County a more inclusive county. Additionally, increasing frequency on Route One will help congestion and make public transit a more reliable option for all the residents on its corridor. Investing at Hart means we're taking a critical investment in reducing our carbon footprint. Transportation is one of the largest contributors to greenhouse gas emissions, especially in a growing county like Hillsborough County. If we want to address climate change in a meaningful way, we need to give residents real alternative to driving. Encouraging more people to use public transportation through initiatives like this will produce traffic condition, cut emissions, and make our air cleaner and our city more sustainable. This plan isn't just about convenience or savings. It's about securing a healthier, greener future for our community. Every car we take off the road through better public transportation options is a step toward reducing the harmful environmental impacts that driving does for climate change. And when we invest in better buses, better fares, then we're investing in cleaner air and cleaner water. By investing in fare-free Transit Now, we are investing in the long-term health of our city and planet. We have the opportunity to lead the way in making Hillsborough County a city where a county where sustainable transportation options is not just an option, but a priority that all of you get to lead in our community with. I really urge the Hart Board to continue supporting this initiative and other initiatives that help fund one of the most underfunded transit agencies in the nation. And thank you for your time and for working toward for better and more connected Hillsborough County. And I really want you all to take the fact that when you help uplift those most vulnerable people, you help provide them a more equitable role in our society. And a lot of these people are in this room, and they really do want a better system, and believing you for providing that better system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. We appreciate you. Next is Humira Avsal.
Good evening. I'm just, would reiterate what Tatiana and Dana have already said. And I'm actually, since they've already covered so much, I'm just going to share a couple of stories regarding the fare-free, the fare-free Route One. On Saturday, I found myself at the Ebor Market, and I struck up a conversation with a gentleman. And he was sharing stories. He had grown up in Ebor and was talking about his childhood and how things He had grown up in Ebor and was talking about his childhood and how things have changed, et cetera. And a couple of times he mentioned, when he was at the bus stop, or he mentioned the bus multiple times. So I said, "Do you ever take Route 1?" He said, "Yeah, I take Route 1 all the time." Did you know that, and I said, "Did you know that Route 1 is going to be fare-free for a year? And there will also be a bit more frequency." He's like, "What? Are you serious?" He said, "That would be so amazing." And he talked to me about what an, what an impact, just something so simple as making that route fare-free, how it would improve his life. This is someone who also shared with me how he used to take, he used to ride his bicycle from Brandon to his job in Ebor every day for many years because he did not have transportation and he had to share a car. So these kinds of changes that you are making really do improve the lives of people. So we, I'm also with Transit, Transit Now Tampa Bay, and I very much support the work that you're doing. And, oh, another story, I also talked with another woman who works with women who have suffered homelessness, they have had issues with domestic violence, and she does, tries to help them find jobs. And I talked with her, and she said many jobs that these people would be eligible to apply for are simply not on the table because they look at transportation, and it would take them two hours to get to that job. So I also told her about what's going on with, with transit. So increasing the number of routes, increasing frequency really will have a huge impact on the lives of regular people. So please, we're supporting the work you do, you'll be hearing more from us, and thank you for what you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Afsal, we appreciate you. The last speaker I have is Adna Curioso, and pardon me if I mispronounce that.
Hi, it's Adrienne, by the way.
Pardon me, thanks.
So I have been a Tampa citizen my entire life, and I've been using public transit since I was a kid in 2009. And it is a daunting task to introduce people to. I did it out of necessity, I don't know that I would have if I didn't need to use it, but I have pretty severe anxiety around vehicles for personal reasons, and so it's just never something I've been able to overcome. I still would like to be a productive member of society, and the way the system is organized right now, it makes it very hard for me to get to the various jobs that I've had simply using this, this public transportation system. I have to have three different apps on my phone, I have the Google Maps app to plan my route, and I have two different transit apps that tell me different times for different buses, and some days one is more accurate than the other. But right now, I don't, sorry, I walked in here like 20 minutes late because the bus that I had to take to get here, I was on time to the bus, and the bus was 20 minutes behind. It's stuff like that that makes it really hard for me to try and tell people that they can use the system because it's, it's unusable for a lot of people if they have access to a vehicle. But when you are put in a position where you don't have any other options, you make do. And so I've had hour-and-forty-long commutes to places that were 30 minutes away from me by car because that's the system that I have, and that's what I feel like is safest for me to do based on my issues with transportation. But it, it keeps people locked into like life plans that they didn't want to be in if we don't have, give them more options and more access. There are so many people who want to be productive members of society that can't because they, it's circumstances that are not their fault and not of their own making. And there are so many other places in the world that have public transit, and they see it as a community need, not just a desire or want, but a need to allow people access to places around town in a way that is feasible. And just the, the lack of infrastructure that we have around this is a big reason why we're having so many issues with traffic getting worse and worse every single year and car, like accidents and everything happening. It's just, it's been going downhill, and I've seen it go downhill, even when I was younger and, you know, using it, it's gotten, it's gotten worse since then. I just wish more of us had, would invest more in this as if it was a community need and not just something that poor people need. Like, it's good for everyone to have multiple options for transportation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curioso, we appreciate you, ma'am. Next, let's see here, on the agenda this evening is appointment to the Transportation Organization Board, I will hand it to our Board Counsel.
Thank you. Before we open nominations for the TPO, I want to remind the board members of the discussion on our August 5, 2024 meeting. Board members approved a motion to place the appointment on the next board agenda and consider appointing a board member to represent Heart on the TPO board. Also, what occurred in that meeting is, many of you may recall that previously you had delegated the authority to the Executive Director, and that at your last meeting was removed. So now you would be asking, you would be having some, a member of this board serve on that capacity. You have two members already on your board that serve on the TPO, Commissioner Wasser and Commissioner Myers, they do that on behalf of the board accounting commissioners, so they would not be eligible. But any other member of the Heart Board would be eligible to serve as the Heart representative to the TPO. The TPO board typically meets on the second Wednesday of each month at 10:00 a.m. The process I will ask for nominations is the process we typically use, our nominations from the floor, they do not require a second, so you can make a nomination, but you're not required to second that. And then you also can self-nominate yourself if you so desire. Once the nominations are closed, we'll ask the board members to vote on the nominations in the order received by going through all of the board members and naming the individual that you would like to vote for, for that nomination. If, at whatever point we get to where we have a majority, then we'll go ahead and take a full board vote for that nomination. So at this point in time, I would seek any nominations for members of the Heart, Heart Board to sit on the TPO as the Heart Board Member Representative. Commissioner Myers?
I nominate Board Member Gary Hartfield.
Thank you. As I said, you don't need to second that, is there any other nominations? No other nominations from the floor? Given that there's no other nominations, I would seek for us to just go ahead and have a motion to name Mr. Hartfield as the board nominee.
So moved.
Did you wish to speak, or were you moving?
I just wanted to ask if he wanted to accept the nomination.
Fair enough, I probably should have checked with him first before I just moved that right on forward. The, the nomination doesn't require a second, but once we get to the point where we're actually having the nomination be cleared by the board, you would make, have a motion in a second to have him appointed.
We have a motion by Board Member Sisler, seconded by, did you have a question, sir? Or you go ahead, sir?
I'm gonna vote no, but only because we've, we're so deep into considerations of the regional MPO, and one of the things that we came together on a board for the most part of, except for, I think, three out of like 16, whatever the number is, is that the other counties didn't want to perceive us as trying to stack the deck with some of these sub-organizations. And one of the ones that we agreed would be stepping off as a non-voting member, or stepping off as a voting member to be in non-advisory role, was Heart. We're agreeing to keep the port and to keep the aviation as more of a regional, but they didn't want it to be perceived as us trying to stack it with other organizations. And for me, the best way that I can signal to the other counties is that we are in fact not trying to do that, is that we just leave the role vacant right now and cure the problem. So that's, I want you to understand my no vote.
Did you? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion, I believe, by Board Member Sisler, was there a second? Okay, Board Members.
Second.
And I, and I think Mr. Mechanic there. Roll call, please.
Director Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson? Is that a yes, ma'am? Okay, thank you. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Sisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
And Director Wohlstal?
No.
Motion passes unanimously, Chair.
Thank you very much, Board. Unless if there's any further questions or comments. And to Director Hartfield, congratulations. I, I served on that board for three years, and I'm glad I'm off. So, so, I'm honest, I'm honest, guys. I love being on this board, but I'm always smiling here, so.
I'm the chair, and we have so much fun now.
It's been a while, it's been a while. But, but thank, did you want to say anything, sir, briefly, or?
Thank you to the board, and I look forward to continued service.
Thank you, Director Hartfield, we appreciate you. Next agenda item is approval of the meeting minutes from the August 5, 2024 Board of Directors Regular Meeting, which were in the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Motion by Board Member Myers, seconded by Board Member Williams, unless if there's any discussion. Roll call, please.
Director Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson? Director Henderson?
I said yes!
Thank you, ma'am, we couldn't hear you the first time. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Sisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Wohlstal?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Finance and Audit Committee met on August 19 of this year and advanced items 5A through 5C for approval by the full Board of Directors. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? Okay, being none, let's please have a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you, Board Member Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Board Member Hartfield, roll call, please.
Director Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Director Sisler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Wohlstal?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we will review the action items with presentations. The Heart Finance and Audit Committee met on August 19 of 2024 and advanced action item resolution R2024-09-35 to authorize the CEO to extend the managed services agreement with INT for renewal period three and renewal period four through September 30 of 2026, and to provide system operation and managed services for the Flamingo Fairs program for a total not to exceed the amount of $2.46 million. For the full board consideration this time, CEO Drainville, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to invite to the podium Mr. Emmanuel Nunes, Manager of Retail Sales and Revenue, to share the slides that accompany this action item.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. For the record, Emmanuel Nunes, Manager of Retail Sales and Revenue, Board Members, Chair, Mrs. Drainsville. So here to provide you a little presentation, it was provided in the Finance Committee, and now we're here to just give you the extra information that we need. So the agenda for tonight is the benefit of Flamingo Fairs. Flamingo Fairs, the media allocation, this is when they use the smart cards or the phone, want to give you a breakdown on that. A program update. The rides for FY '24 as of July or August, I believe. The adoption rates, how's it going in comparison to the total fares every month, and then what is the adoption rate when it comes to Flamingo Fairs? And budget allocation, and how it affects, and how we share those costs with the other agencies, or one agency, and the marketing plan. Flamingo benefits, the main benefits, we, we have a list of them. So we have, it's designed to save our customer money. We always try to give them the best fare, and that is called fare capping. Once a customer decides, once, a fare cap isn't just a smart card advantage that allows the customer to pay as they go and always get the best and lowest fare every time. Another we have is customers that choose a round trip will automatically be upgraded to a day pass, and also is the same for also for a monthly card. And customer can ride frequently and will automatically be upgraded to the monthly. And pass once, once they have paid for 33 trips within a calendar month, that will be upgraded to a monthly card. Customers will pay no more than $4 a day and no more than $65 per calendar month. Discount programs and participants will pay no more than $2 per day and $32.50 per month. Flamingo Fairs also offers a balance protection, which means that once the customer loads money in their account, the funds can stay in their account until they use it. If the card is reported lost or stolen, the customer can easily access their account online. And through a in-store account access, they could block the card and request a replacement. So they'll always have their funding or their product if it's available. Another benefit is you use one card and you could pay it on Pinellas County. So you could use the 100, 300X at MTC and make that transfer coming from the University Transit Center. The type of payments that we have on Flamingo Fairs includes mobile, mobile app. We have, that you could download it on the Google Play and Apple Pay. We have open payment where we use the NFC debit card and debit credit card, Apple Pay, Samsung Pay, and most digital wallets that is available. And also we have the Flamingo card. This is provided to our regular fare and discounted clients, and they're available for students and veterans as well. The fare meter allocations, we'll see the 61.6% is mainly used by the Flamingo card. This is the actual physical card that the customer requires at the Transit Center mainly. 18% of that is the open payment. That's then a steady increase when it comes to open payment. People seem to be paying with their debit credit card more, as increasing every month. And also the last one, we have the mobile payment, which is at 20.5%. Now, an update on the, on the program is that we publicly launched in January 2021. We have provided about 20,000 mobile Flamingo cards, that'll be the one with the QR code. And our perspective, we have about 35 institutional corporate accounts. We have transitioned at least 20. So that way there, by this include BOCC as their employees. We have the city of Tampa and the parking division. We have Sunchan Line, they're part of our program that actually, to expand our services when it comes to Flamingo Fairs. We have issued about 100,000 Flamingo cards within the whole system. This includes Heart and PSTA. With Heart and PSA as well, we have provided about 15 million rides in Flamingo Fair, so it's, it's being used. And also we have initiated extensive marketing and outreach campaign to our clients. And this graph will show you the routes from the one that is most used, which is Route Number 1, Florida Avenue. Second one is Route Number 6, which is 56th Street. That third one will be Route 400, Nebraska Avenue. Fourth one, Hillsborough Avenue, number 34. And the fifth one, that will be Route 45, University Avenue on West Shore. Adoption rate is trending, going up little, little by little. Up to July 2024, we have, we're at a 19.17% of our total ridership in a month. That's how it's, it's trending. Think for August, we're about 20 now. So that's just keep going up a little bit. The budget impact and allocation of service services, we have the operation and management costs that are outlined with our MSA or Managing Service Agreement, and that includes some variable costs that is based on usage. We, the system will monitor like software delivery for any type of updates, patches, promotional fare. That's part of our services when it comes to that. Back office support, which is, you know, training, sales, or any type of payment discrepancy that we need to address. So we have hardware warranty, where we actually send the hardware to our, the agencies so they could do some repairs, just to give you a few. Procurement negotiates annually within it to reevaluate some of the costs. Maybe we're overly used or underly utilized, so they kind of go and negotiate. Maybe we're overly used or underly utilized, so they kind of go and negotiate those prices. So for 2024, the budget was $1.1 million. Per the MOU with our partner, in this case, P S D A, a lot of our charges are on our share on per task basis. So if Pinellas County uses 68% of the TAP, that's their share of the, of the cost. So it's not totally a hard cost, it's actually shared by the other agencies that are part of it. And if we add more agencies, we are shared all around with all the agencies. For marketing, we are planning on the elimination of paper passes, meaning the magnetic passes that are the blue, the green, 31-day passes that we have available to make a full transition to our e-fair Flamingo Fairs on January 2nd, 2025. There's been extensive marketing community outreach that kicked off on August 19th, 2024. We had multiple session and we had our Hart Street Team at all the transfer centers and other locations. Hart Transit Advertising, they use the shelter ads, exterior vehicles, interior cars, fare box, onboard audio, and hard facility advertising and customer service hold message. Radio and digital signal through iHeart Media and WUSF and digital advertising on our Hart website, landing page for that, social media and email blasting. We continue to offer and transition our clients to Flamingo Fairs, through our Hart Youth Pass, we're promoting with Hillsborough County Public Schools. They, they're part of the program and we provide 50% off to our students, 18, 5 to 18. Corporate accounts, we're working with corporate institutions and other third-party vendors to transition our current max ride fares to a limited-use, tapable card. Provided a picture there, it's just a smart card, just happened to be a more flexible, short-term use that is available to our client as well. So that way they could just tap on the bus instead of using the max ride. And the committee action item was to authorize the Chief Executive Officer to extend the managed services agreement within it for renewal period III and renewal period IV through September 30th, 2026 and to provide system operation and managed services for the Flamingo Fairs program for a total not to exceed of $2,460,000. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Since, I'm assuming there's an interlocal agreement with Pinellas and that's how they're able to go on both?
That is correct.
Is the cost split 50/50 for the integration and development of this program or what's that?
The creation, it was kind of like a 50/50, let's put it that way, when we first implemented with Heart and Pinellas. Right now it's just everything, all the costs are being broken out by taps now, or usage.
Okay, so it's a user fee now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Board Member Schissler, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. Regarding those costs, like we're doing with the City of Tampa, we're fully allocating tangibles. Are we doing the same with this?
So I'm unclear on the question.
The costs, there's going to be internal costs that go on with this that are hard to capture. Are we fully allocating all those internal costs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Move for approval.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion by Board Member Myers, do we have a second? Second by Board Member Schissler, roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson? Director Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schissler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Wolstall?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next is Action Item 6B Resolution R2024-09-36 to authorize the CEO to award a contract to Clever Devices LTD for the Computer-Aided Dispatch Automatic Vehicle Locator CAT AVL and Scheduling Intelligent Transportation System with a five-year annual maintenance agreement for fixed route and streetcar in the amount of $6,141,144 plus a contingency of $541,742 for a total not to exceed $6,682,886. CEO Drainville, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair. I want to welcome Sean McCott, the Chief Operating Officer of Hart, to present this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Viera, members of the Board and CEO Drainville. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I realize that many of you have heard this presentation, some of you multiple times, so I appreciate you indulging me. But this is, this initiative represents a generational step forward for Hart and its employees and its customers. The acronym CAT AVL stands for Computer-Aided Dispatch and Automatic Vehicle Locator. I'll get into exactly what that, that means and what it does on the next slide, but this system is critical for transmitting vehicle locator information and service plans and is essential for the seamless operation and communication within our transit network. As we discuss the importance of replacing our CAT AVL system, it's helpful to understand the distinct functions that these components perform and how they contribute to our overall operations. Computer-Aided Dispatch assigns and tracks vehicle assignments dynamically, ensuring that each vehicle is optimally utilized based on current conditions and operator availability. It also logs and manages incidents such as delays, accidents and service disruptions, allowing us to respond swiftly and minimize any impact on service. The system facilitates seamless communication between dispatchers and drivers, enabling effective coordination and quick resolution of issues. The Automatic Vehicle Locator portion offers real-time location data to every vehicle in our fleet, allowing us to monitor route adherence and schedule compliance accurately. It generates alerts when vehicles enter or exit predefined areas, which helps in managing service boundaries and ensuring adherence to designated routes. The system also collects valuable data on vehicle performance, such as speed and deviations from planned routes, which aids in optimizing operations and maintenance. Understanding these functions highlights how the replacement CAT AVL system will enhance our ability to manage and coordinate transit services efficiently. Hart's current CAT AVL system relies on outdated technology that does not, does not support many of the latest advancements in transit management. Our legacy analog system procured in 2006 often lacks compatibility with modern devices and software, which limits Hart's ability to be innovative. The hardware and infrastructure supporting the current system are outdated and replacement parts and technical support for obsolete equipment becomes challenging and costly to obtain as the years pass. The existing system has limitations in providing real-time data and accurate vehicle tracking, leading to inefficiencies in route management and service delivery. This can impact customer satisfaction and overall service reliability. The replacement system will enhance the accuracy of bus arrival predictions, improving the reliability of service and improving customer satisfaction. It will also provide real-time detour of information, allowing for quicker adjustments and better communication of route changes to both operators and customers. Additionally, the replacement system will ensure that layovers and break times are managed more effectively, contributing to better scheduling and improved employee morale and satisfaction. The replacement CAT AVL system will offer a more intuitive and user-friendly interface, enhancing the overall experience for both customers and employees. Streamlined processes and improved communication tools will contribute to a more efficient and pleasant work environment. Following a thorough and competitive process, we recommend the Clever Devices CAT AVL system as the ideal replacement for our current system. Here are the key components of the proposed solution. The replacement system will include hardware. The Clever Devices CAT AVL system will come with state-of-the-art hardware. This includes modern vehicle-mounted units and robust data collection devices that will enhance our ability to monitor and manage our fleet effectively. Hart will acquire the Clever Devices Software Operating License, which will provide us with access to their advanced CAT AVL software. The software is renowned for its reliability, user-friendly interface and comprehensive features that will greatly improve our dispatch and tracking capabilities. Clever Devices will provide 24/7 maintenance support and updates for the next five years. This support includes timely troubleshooting, system updates and upgrades, ensuring that our system remains current with the latest technological advancements and performs at its best. The combination of cutting-edge hardware, advanced software and comprehensive support will significantly enhance our operational efficiency, improve service reliability and ultimately provide a better experience for both our customers and our employees. I'm pleased to share that we have secured full federal funding for our CAT AVL replacement project amounting to $10.1 million. This funding comes from 5307 Federal Highway Administration Funds, specifically allocated for the replacement of the Fixed Route CAT AVL system. This project is cost-neutral to Hart. It's important to note that these funds can only be directed towards the replacement of the CAT AVL system and the associated cost. Any remaining funds will be allocated to the acquisition of a new radio system, which will further enhance our communication capabilities. The urgency of this project cannot be overstated. Our current CAT AVL system has reached its end of its useful life and the limitations are increasingly impacting our operational efficiency and service reliability. Again, the new system is crucial to ensure that we continue to provide high-quality service and maintain effective management of our transit operation. The return on investment for this project can best be illustrated by estimated cost savings that this replacement will bring. Our projections indicate financial benefits across several key areas which are identified on the chart above. Additionally, we anticipate savings in maintenance and fuel costs due to improved system efficiency and vehicle performance. The new CAT AVL system will help optimize routes, reduce fuel consumption and lower all, lower overall maintenance expenses. As part of the procurement, Hart has requested a price list for potential future purchases. This is to ensure that we are prepared for any additional needs or upgrades subject to the availability of funding. It's important to note that these additional features beyond the replacement system are not included in the initial base proposal. These features would be considered separately and require additional funding. Clever Devices has indicated that the pricing provided in their proposal is valid for a period of five months. We should account for potential inflation or cost adjustments beyond this period when planning our budget. Hart can use the provided pricing index as a baseline for future budgeting exercises. This will help us in planning and forecasting costs for any additional features or future system expansions. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we recommend the Clever Devices CAT AVL system is the ideal replacement for our current system. This slide provides a snapshot of Clever Devices' extensive presence across the United States and other areas where their simple, where their system has been adopted reliably and effectively. Their track record makes them a strong choice for our needs as they are a proven commodity in our industry. The procurement details for this procurement released on December 1st, 2023 and were accessible via the Hart webpage, DemandStar and Barnfire to assure wide visibility. We use the best value procurement approach to evaluate the proposals on overall, overall value, not just cost. The final recommendation solution costs $6,682,886, reflecting our commitment to obtaining a high-quality, cost-effective system. As you know, a best value procurement allows us to select vendors based on their overall value rather than solely on the lowest bid. This approach is designed to ensure that we get the most beneficial solution for our needs, considering factors such as quality, performance and long-term benefits. As part of the process, we have the flexibility to negotiate with vendors to secure the best possible price. This means that after evaluating proposals based on their merits, we can engage in discussions to refine and improve our, their offer, ensuring that we achieve the best value for our investment. In this case, our final cost of $6,682,886 reflects this negotiation process where we've worked to align the costs with the exceptional value and quality provided by the Clever Devices CAT AVL system. This approach ensures that we are not only getting a competitive price, but also the best solution to meet our operational needs and improve our customer experience. The resolution is to recommend the Hart Board of Directors authorize the Chief Executive Officer to award a contract to Clever Devices Limited for the Computer-Aided Dispatch Automatic, Automatic Vehicle Location and Scheduling Intelligent Transportation System with a five-year annual maintenance agreement for fixed route and streetcar in the amount of $5,417,419 plus a contingency of $541,742 for a total not to exceed amount of $6,682,886. I'd be happy to take any questions from the Board.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the Board?
I have a quick question, I want to play devil's advocate for a minute. How many public, public transportation systems are here in the state of Florida?
Seven?
Seven? Seven? How many in, in the contiguous United States?
FTA transit agencies, say at least 80.
Okay. How many are using this system?
30.
30. 30 out of 80. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I'm surprised that you knew that last answer. Basically, you're, in layman terms, you're switching from a fax machine to what could be accomplished with a text message.
We're going from the jets, to Flintstones to the Jetsons.
And this will improve things like our on-time, our OTPs and our other metrics?
Yes, sir.
That we strive to hit but failed to hit.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your hard work on this. Do you need, is there's an action item, right, to move for approval? I will move for approval.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve Resolution R2024-09-36 by Board, Vice Chair Bosel, seconded by Board Member Williams. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Director Hartfield?
Yes.
Director Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Hobbs?
Yes.
Director King?
Yes.
Director McAlphatrick?
Yes.
Director Mechanic? Director Mechanic? Director Myers?
Yes.
Director Schissler?
Yes.
Chair Viera?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Wolstall?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before the Board today is the presentation of the Hart Legislative Priorities. Mr. Drainville, if you will please introduce this item.
Thank you again, Chair. So each year Hart develops federal and state legislative agenda and priorities for the upcoming legislative sessions. Before you today is a draft developed in collaboration between staff and the Holland Knight. It was presented to the Strategic Planning and External Relations Committee for review and discussion. In your package, you can find the meeting minutes that captured those discussions. The committee recommended advancing these priorities to the Hart Board of Directors for approval. Holland and Knight team members are physically with us today.
Thank you very much. My name is Carl Koch, I'm with Holland Knight. I am part of your federal team. As you all probably know, Holland Knight represents Hart both before the federal Congress and state and agencies as well as in Tallahassee for the state legislature and state agencies. We are joined tonight by the lead of our federal team, Lisa Barkovik from DC, as well as from Tallahassee, the leads of the team in Tallahassee, Kim Case and Mark Delagall. I'm going to do a quick little overview in terms of where our priorities are focused on y'all's behalf. You will see that a lot of the priorities are very focused on the heavy maintenance facility because that is a Hart priority and we are doing everything we can to bring that home for you all. So having said that, we're happy to stick around after the presentation, answer questions if you have any. We are going to start with the state team and Kim Case.
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Case from Holland Knight. Also with me is Mark Delagall. What I'll do first is start with an overview of upcoming legislative events and highlight implementation of two new provisions of law that were passed in the 2024 session. And then Mark will provide an overview of Hart's legislative parties at the state level for the 2025 session. Every year Hart sets a legislative agenda for both federal and state. It's not a one and done, it's an ongoing conversation that we have with your team as we assess what are your fiscal needs as well as policy objectives that we need to try to accomplish both at the state level as well as the that we need to try to accomplish, both at the state level as well as the federal level. This list has been developed over the last few months, and obviously, we asked the board to partner with staff to move these priorities forward, both at the state and federal level. Couple of dates to go over. We'll have organizational session in Tallahassee on November 19th. That's when we swear in, well, that's when new members are sworn in, as well as the new speaker, Danny Perez from Miami. He'll become the new House Speaker. On the Senate side, it will be Ben Albretton will be the new Senate President. So that will occur. And then shortly thereafter, probably in the next two to three weeks after that, we will find out who the committee chairs are and what the committee assignments are in other leadership positions. Interim committee meetings will begin in December, and they will go through February. It's an odd year, 2025, so the 60-day session will actually start a little bit later. It will be in March and go through May 2nd, 2025. Obviously, what we've been very focused in over the past few years, especially with the new leadership team, is to focus on fostering strong relationships with our legislators in Tallahassee, collaborating with legislative partners as well as other transit partners to maximize and expand resources in the state. We've appreciated the board's willingness. Many of you have come to Tallahassee and advocated with us. We would obviously invite you again to do so when the CEO is there or some other point. Mark Deligall and I are happy to take you around and introduce you and have you meet with key chairs and other members of the Hillsborough delegation as we advocate for our priorities. We've arranged meetings with HART leadership and state legislators over the summer with Scott, and we will continue doing so throughout the year. Before the start of the 2025 session, the CEO of HART and our team will have met with every member of the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation as well as key committee chairs in Tallahassee. HART leadership will also meet with other community leaders, advocates and stakeholders about HART priorities, especially the heavy maintenance facility. The other two things I'd like to highlight are two provisions that impact transit agencies that were part of a Florida Department of Transportation bill that was signed into law, that's House Bill 1301. So the first provision has to do with administrative costs. In an effort to ensure greater fiscal transparency and accountability to the taxpayers of Florida, transit agencies will need to, in a publicly noticed meeting in November, certify that its budgeted and general administrative costs are not greater than the 20% above the annual state average. That is being calculated by FDOT right now, and we expect to get those numbers in the next two weeks. We will also need to present a line item budget report of administrative costs, disclose all salaried executive and management-level employees' total compensation, ridership performance and metrics, and any gifts accepted for contracts. This disclosure must be posted annually on HART's website. And then the department, as I said, is determining what that cost looks like based on tier. There are two tiers. If you have 100 vehicles or more, you're in tier one. That's where HART falls. If you're less than 100, you're in tier two. A year-over-year cumulative increase of 5% or more in general administrative costs must be reviewed by FDOT and approved, so we'll have to submit that. Initial guidance that we've received in conversations that we've had with FDOT are that the department, using national transportation data that HART has submitted, we will fall under that 20% above the annual state average, which is good news. So we will not exceed that 20% number. The HART team will be presenting the required information in a public meeting in November and posting that required information online. And actually, in talking with HART, what they've decided to do is take all of the information that's required in this provision for administrative costs, post it in one easily accessible place online so that it's available and, you know, the public can find it. FDOT also recommended that HART submit its annual administrative costs to them for their review and approval every year in August, prior to it going before the board here. One other provision I'll point out is related to bus wraps and advertising. That was Section 13 of the bill. Public transit providers cannot expend department funds for marketing or advertising activities, including any wrap, tinting, paint or other medium displayed attached or affixed on a bus, commercial motor vehicle or motor vehicle that is owned, leased, operated by the public transit provider. If department funds are used, those vehicles are limited to displaying a brand or logo of the public transit provider, the official seal of a jurisdictional government entity or a state agency, public service. Initially, there was a lot of confusion about what this meant, whether it completely prohibited third-party advertising or not. But based on follow-up conversations that we have had with FDOT, it appears that the prohibition only impacts paratransit vehicles here at HART because department funds were used. And currently, I believe, only four paratransit vehicles do wraps right now. So the fiscal impact, which we initially thought would be much greater, is really minimal. So that was good news, and I wanted to share that with you. Originally, we thought it was going to be about a $1.4 million fiscal impact to your upcoming budget. It will not be. So those are the key provisions I wanted to highlight. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about our legislative priorities for 2025.
Good evening. I'm Mark Deligall, and thank you for allowing me to present to you. So in working with the staff and the committee, we've come up with a couple, three legislative priorities that we are bringing to you for consideration and approval. So the first one is seeking funds to rebuild the heavy maintenance facility. So the estimates that we have, this project is going to cost about $140 million. There's a number of sources of revenue, but we need the state to help us. So our proposal for you to approve is to go to the legislature, working with our local delegation. Things are good, and from this standpoint, the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee is from Hillsborough County. The chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee is from Pinellas, close neighbor. And we've been speaking with both of them for well over a year about this issue and the needs that we have here at HART. And our idea would be to go and ask the Florida Legislature for non-recurring funds of $35 million. Last year, we asked Representative Koster to file what's called a member project. We would ask her to do that again this year. We would also ask Senator Collins, who filed the member project last year. We would ask him to do it as well. So that would be one item we would put forward to all of you for consideration and approval and direction, if you felt, if you agreed with that. Obviously, $35 million is not going to build the whole thing. There's a number of other sources of dollars that are out there, including federal funds, local funds, as well as other state funds. But this is an appropriation I know we would seek from the member project. The next thing that we have vetted, discussed as part of your team, and just by way of background, the legislative team meets with your staff every single Thursday at 8:30, and we do that year-round. And we research, we discuss, we vet. And one of the ideas that, after some committee meetings that we've had, maybe even a board meeting, was the idea of seeking some additional ideas for operational revenue to operate, not just simply the non-recurring dollars for capital improvement on the heavy maintenance facility. One of the ideas that was discussed is whether or not there would be an appetite, it would require state law change, to seek the approval to have a sales tax or a surtax for transportation, but only charged in the municipality, in a particular municipality, ergo Tampa. That would require, it is not prohibited by the state constitution, would be our research, but it would require a law change. That does not exist anywhere else in the state of Florida. The way it would be proposed to you for consideration, if you wanted to try to pursue this, is to craft it essentially where it would only apply to Tampa. And by the couple of the elements that would make that so would be to, say, a municipality over 400,000 people in a county that does not already have a sales tax, surtax for transit. And I think when you do that, you narrow it down to essentially Tampa, Florida. I think there are some steps that would have to be gone through, and probably some politics that would have to go through with the city and also with the county government on whether this would be advisable. I will point out, it is generally the notion of county government around the state that they do not favor this, allowing a city. It is not done anywhere. I've mentioned this also, that it would be a logistical challenge. We've talked to the Department of Revenue, and right now, they can cite the sale by county. They do not have a mechanism to cite the sale by municipal boundaries. So they're going to have to create an infrastructure at the Revenue Department of Florida to be able to say that this sale took place in unincorporated Tampa, so therefore not taxed. An unincorporated Hillsborough, therefore not taxed. This sale for a candy bar took place within the municipal boundaries. But where there's a will, there's a way. With computers today, I have to believe that could be done, but it is not done currently. County government generally, from the broad perspective, doesn't favor allowing this. However, I would have to believe this is where I was going. If the city of Tampa and the city and the county of Hillsborough were to agree to this, I think that the overall county government cadre in Tallahassee would probably not. And I've had conversations with the Florida Association of Counties about this, about their historical position and whether or not they would think. Now, here's one thing I want to mention to you as an alternative, but there's a downside to it. Right now, the city of Tampa could impose, Chairman Viera, you keep me honest here. I think you have a cap in your avalorum tax, that you could increase the avalorum taxes for purposes of funding transit, if that was the desire to do. And I'm sorry, I'm not pushing the buttons. But the downside to that is you would not capture visitors. The tax would fall only on the residents of the city of Tampa, not on the visitors to the city of Tampa. So there's something to consider there. Bottom line is, if you want to do this, we're going to need to file a bill of general application. We're going to probably, you know, there's going to be a lot of support we're going to need to seek, city, county, community legislators. And we all need to go and hold hands in Tallahassee as a group from this part of the state to accomplish this. Any division among us, I think, would probably mean this wouldn't go through. So that's that idea. And the last one is just a sentence, Commissioner Worsner. I don't mean to, I can tell you're ready to say something. The only other thing we would suggest is that we're in the Transit Association, and we would suggest that we row with them. They have other issues, and from time to time, we meet with them every, all during session, all in a week, and sometimes they ask us to put an oar in the water on their topics, and we would like authority to do that as we normally do. So that's why I'll stop.
Vice Chair Vosel, and then Board Member Schisler, and then Board Member Hartfield and Board Member Myers.
If my colleagues want me to go last, I totally understand. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Mark Deligall.
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 Mr. Deligall. Okay. What do you think that I was going to say? I'm so curious.
I think you were going to ask questions about the idea of doing the sales tax on the sales in the municipal boundaries.
You're aware that I've brought it up multiple times over the past year, right?
Yes, sir. And that is why it is on this agenda.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to oust you, but this is your idea.
So you and members of the public might be very surprised to hear that I've actually already began communications with the appropriate parties. Quite frankly, I'm just tired of the unnecessary infighting between the downtown city of Tampa elites and the unincorporated area that is taxed and never, ever going to get benefit from this. We've had acknowledgement multiple times throughout the past year, year and a half, that even if we doubled the amount of property tax revenue that this organization was getting, they would not be able to meaningfully expand service into the unincorporated area that represents 71% of the residents of Hillsborough County. It would only allow them to expand the amount of frequency on the current routes that we have. Is that correct, CEO Drainsville?
That's correct.
And that's really my point of going after this, is that we use terms about equity, and I don't believe in terms like that. I just think about like what's right and what's wrong. And right now, I have constituents in Wyomama, the lowest-income people in the population, that are being taxed for this because low-income people also own property and pay property taxes, and they would benefit from these services. They will never meaningfully get these services to bring them to jobs, the hospital, grocery stores. I've tried even just to see, and it's been rejected in the past year. Where you would get a major point of contention from me is that this tax must be a replacement. It'll help us meet our obligation to the state's OPAGA study, which is an organizational and structural overhaul. That would be a benefit for us to not get our charter pulled by the state is for us to say, hey, this would also help us meet what your own inspectors gave us guidance to do. And that's by removing that if we did allow a municipality, I liked the way that you protected it, I believe that that's right over 400,000 non-consolidated county as well, that would opt out Jacksonville, which is the same way that the indigent tax of 1991 was written. That's how they opted out Jacksonville. All of those things are good, but it would have to be the requirement of, similar to former Representative Hooper's requirement in 2012, which passed actually the House and the Senate. Many people don't know about that. It was to allow a local organization to pass a tax, actually a sales tax, and it required the trade-off, though, of the avalorum tax. So it would allow the municipality to tax themselves through a consumption sales tax, which is more heavily subsidized by those with higher spending power and, as you said, travelers into the city, which they claim is an extraordinary proportion of the amount of sales tax. They stake claim on it being extraordinarily high in the city. Well, this is a great way for some money where your mouth is conversation is like, hey, we're going to give up. We're going to lower the cost of living and housing for everybody in Hillsborough County by forfeiting the property tax in place of if you can get your voters, it must go through a referendum in the city of Tampa to say, yes, we would like to see this municipality tax for the city of Tampa for transportation needs. It would stop all of the rightful fighting. I live in the unincorporated area in Odessa, basically. I don't know that any meaningful public transportation is ever going to support me and my family. So this is a right of fairness for all 71, 1.1 million people that live in the unincorporated area to not be property taxed. It would reduce the cost of housing and afford the cost of doing business in the three cities as well. And then it's just a subsidized consumption tax. So that would be my one point, is that if we do it, it must have the similar language to, I think it was HB 865 of 2012. Governor Scott vetoed it, and we probably need to read that veto language. I haven't, I don't have that committed to memory yet, and just say, hey, you know, this was tried before, kind of, and the House and the Senate got it by the finish line, which is good news, right? So it's not like they're doing something totally extraordinary. And then if there's any friends to the governor, we'd probably like to, he has every reason to veto this. You got the city of mayor that was threatened to use property taxes to sue him during COVID. He has got every reason to veto this, and we would probably need a good advocate to say, hey, we understand, but please don't, and this is why. And the state has an appetite to move away from regressive property taxes and go to consumption taxes, and this is helping us stay in that model. So as long as it has the requirement similar to that 2012 bill to forfeit the county-wide property tax and trade for the sales tax, I am 100% of us supporting advocating for that. So thank you for adding it on here.
Thank you, sir. Next is Board Member Schisler. And before that, I am having to leave at about 8:05 for something. I promised my son I would do with him tonight. I'm just being transparent. And I did want to speak about something during the chairman's hour, or whatever you want to call it. But again, I think we can get through this in time. But Board Member Schisler? Did I see another hand?
I will keep my comments brief as I can. A couple of quick questions. The $35 million for the, where do you go? There he is, the $35 million for the heavy equipment facility. Will that be leverageable, or is that going to be? That's on. Will that be leverageable so that we can use federal funds to increase that?
Well, here's the federal. Well, here's the federal expert. I'll give an uninformed position, yes.
So sorry, we weren't totally done with our presentation, but I'll just be very quick. So on the heavy maintenance facility from the federal level side, we have a variety of options to pursue for funding. That includes the RACE grant program, the bus and bus facilities, the low to no emission program, as well as seeking community project funding for FY 2026 for next calendar year 2025.
Okay. Yes?
So, so yes. Yes, sorry.
Because we, you know, it's going to be $140 million, 35 doesn't quite get us there.
So if we were to go after a low to no emission grant next year, we would be seeking at least, you know, somewhere between 50 to 60 million dollars from that program. We could seek a maximum of 25 million from the RACE grant program. So there is a variety of kind of strategy where we could go after several different types of federal grants.
There was at least one grant that we missed out on back in July. I had never heard a postmortem as to why, what that was. And that's not an indictment on anybody, it's just that I never heard anything and you brought it up, so.
So we received a debrief from the U.S. Department of Transportation on our RACE grant. It did make it to the senior review team, so that made it to the secretary's desk. We were a recommended project. We didn't receive the highly recommended, but because we've been advocating and Mr. Drainville has been meeting with the officials with U.S. Department of Transportation, they brought it up for a second tier review. And so we got great feedback on that project and things that we can do to improve for the next round. As you know, the RACE grant competition is very highly competitive. There's only about 1.5 billion dollars a cycle, sometimes a little bit more depending what the appropriators provide, but, and they typically receive close to 10 billion in applications.
Okay. The, just a couple of real quick questions. On the F.DOT ruling on the wrapping of the bus, we got that in writing? Of only being four vehicles that are affected?
Oh, we don't, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. We don't have that in writing yet, but we will get that, we will get that to you. Okay?
And last but not least, the opportunity to increase our revenues, revenue streams by utilizing sales tax. I know that the Department of Revenue is going to have to, legislature is going to have to change some things to do it. I don't know that I'm in favor of reducing the existing funding levels via the property tax or avalorum tax methodology. Just, you know, you take it out of one pocket, you're, we're right back where we started from. We're not going to gain anything and this is where we need to increase our local funding so that we can leverage that with the federal funds. And this is the only way we're going to improve service, improve our frequency, add more rolling stock, you know, and replace the rolling stock that we have to going forward and get all the things that we need to have done. I fully support moving forward with, you know, petitioning the legislature to modify the rules and let the Department of Revenue figure out how to do it. But I don't, I'm not in favor of, you know, and I fully understand the confiscatory nature of property taxes, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of just dropping, okay, we'll give this and take that because it doesn't get us anywhere. That's just, that's just false economy and I'll leave it there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Next, that Board Member Hartfield, go ahead, sir. And then Board Member Myers and anyone else who'd like to speak.
In the interest of time, I'll keep this very short. Mr. Chair, Julie, what would be the viability of doing a board fly-in in Tallahassee to take members of the board to meet hypothetically with, say, the transportation planning organization on one day, maybe a two-day fly-in, meet with the association on one day, then the second day, meet with the Hillsborough, maybe Pinellas Consortium or delegation and kind of talk about our interests and our needs.
And certainly I know that there have been opportunities to do that individually before. You'd have to be very careful not to place yourself in a position where you're also creating sunshine law violation by many of you being there at one time to discuss items that could come before the board. So I know that there has been opportunities for individual meetings and I know that Mr. Vier has gone to Tallahassee before to have conversations with different members of the legislature there. And so I would just be cognizant not to schedule meetings where you're all together or there's more than one of you together to discuss those matters.
Could we call her? Could we notice it and have her?
I mean, if you wanted, if what you're suggesting is having a meeting, well, you can't have a meeting of your board outside this jurisdiction. So you can't go to Tallahassee and call it a meeting. I mean, the only opportunity that would be have for all of you to be together in one space to have conversations with different members is, you know, either creating a remote meeting where you're all here or some other format where they, in essence, have to come to you in the meeting. So I think I would defer to your lobbying group as to if that is an efficient way to have those conversations or rather having different members have those conversations.
I think we need to repeal the sunshine law.
That is a whole other conversation and it's a long night.
Yes, sir. Director King, did you want to speak to that? And I know what you're going to say because I was there.
Yeah, well, actually, no. No space. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Alternatively, what if we hosted the legislature here or some portion of it?
You certainly have the right to hold a meeting here and invite members of the legislative delegation and have that conversation with them, either as some kind of joint meeting or as just a meeting where they're here for you to talk. Again, I go back to, I would defer to your lobby group as to the efficiency of that, but from a sunshine law perspective, that is completely appropriate for you to have a meeting here in which that occurs.
Well, I'm thinking about a good old-fashioned dog and pony show showcasing heart and, you know, why it's, these things are important to us and why we need them, their help to get them done.
I like that, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Myers and then Board Member Hobbs, go ahead.
Thank you. My only concern, I think it's a great idea when we talk about sales tax, the only thing I would not like to see is what happened between the board of county commissioners and the school board, one entity suing another in order to put something on the ballot. So when we work out all this out, make sure the authority, if it's heart, whomever they have the authority to put it on the ballot and we don't go back and forth suing each other. We all know what just happened with the school board and with the tax, the mileage for that made no sense. I believe that the school board, they have board members, they should have had the authority to place that on the ballot. So we're looking at that with our legislatures as well for next year.
Thank you, ma'am. Board Member Hobbs, go ahead, sir.
Great, thank you. Just really quick, well, I've been on air a couple of years. I spent over 20 years in Tallahassee at the Capitol, both on the inside and on the outside, on teams with and against our lobbying team. And I just want to tell you all that they're fantastic, they are top-notch, and these are not small asks that they brought us, these are huge lifts. And so when, you know, they're telling us what the possible may be, definitely need to listen to them because they wouldn't bring it to us if they didn't think it was something that they could actually accomplish.
Well said, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Let me say, first off, to our team at Hall in the Night, were you all looking for some sort of direction, like a motion or something of that nature directing you to proceed with a policy request and budgetary requests that were made in your presentation?
No, Mr. Chairman, we're just here tonight presenting what it is we're working on at both state and federal level.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, and I'll speak. I mean, I obviously strongly support all these items. I think you guys just do a wonderful job. I've worked with you guys in DC, I think twice we've been up there, in Tallahassee two or three times and we'll go, I guess shortly, it's coming up, man, isn't that funny? Time flies. But, you know, my initial involvement with you guys was with the study that Tallahassee did that was by State Representative McClure and State Senator Burgess. And I think, you know, I like the way that came through, which is I like the way y'all worked, y'all did great on it. And then I liked CEO Drainville and all this board and the work that we did with Tallahassee to show them, look, you've got our attention, we know there's been a lot of challenges, but here's what Heart has to offer. They did a very objective analysis with full transparency in how Heart works and they came out with their findings. I think their findings were very reasonable and true and consistent with what my experience has been. You know, out of all these different things, the maintenance facility is just huge. I know State Senator Collins and State Representative Koster, you know, tried to go to bat for us on that, we appreciate that. For me, that's just, when you see what happens to that facility when it rains and where we're going to see that soon, it's a matter of respect for those workers out there and I think it's awful and everything. So, yeah, I obviously support this. Sir, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, we weren't quite finished yet. We got a little off. But we do have, we do have a list of federal projects that we would just like to present for the board for general consideration, too.
Let me do this if I may, guys. Were you going to present or?
I was, I was.
Are you sure? Okay, because what I was going to ask is, Board, is I need to leave here in 15 minutes and I wanted to do my chairman's report. We're almost finished, but I don't want to inadvertently rush the meeting, right? Because I have to be here at a certain time. Ms. Mandell, if I was to leave, we'd still have a quorum, correct?
That is correct.
Good. Okay, good. Board, is it okay if I go ahead and do my chairman's report? Is that, or does?
Well, before we do that, just to make sure, because it sounds like that item is completed, so we don't have to worry to go back to what we can skip over to.
Yes.
For the purpose of the record, we can skip over to the chair report and then go back to the remains of the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Give them three minutes to wrap up.
There you go. So nothing else on the Hall in the Night report? Nothing? Worth, okay, great. Thank you, guys. And again, we, and by the way, I did want to speak briefly if I may as to the issue of going to Tallahassee and to Washington. You don't necessarily have to go to Tallahassee, sometimes it's just as good. And Board Director Hobbs, I know has a lot of experience with this, a lot of folks here do, to speak to the staff here in the Tampa, Tampa area. You see them at a meeting, you say, look, I serve on the Heart board, let's have coffee. A lot of these folks, you know, we're, we have some local legislators with a great interest in Heart, State Senator Jay Collins, I mentioned Koster, Burgess, McClure, et cetera, they have a great interest in Heart. And some of them would, you know, came in with a certain perspective on Heart and then we talk to them and we get the charm of CEO Drainville there and they begin to look at it a different way. And I've seen that. So that, that does move things forward. So I think that's important. So any further comments on the lobbying report? Okay, thank you, Board. So I will run over, if I may, to my chairman's report really fast. I did want to mention, this is, we had a death recently in Heart, Luis Arroyo. Did any of y'all hear on this gentleman who passed on? Not on, not during the course and scope of employment at all, but he apparently, from what I understand, had a cardiac issue after he left work. And Luis, I did not know him, but I've gotten to know his family afterwards. I am going to be setting something on Heart facilities to allow people to come in and talk about Luis. I found out after he passed on, he had worked for us, was it about six years?
For the Heart.
Yes, sir, about six years. And before he worked for Heart, Luis was from New York City and worked with NYPD for about 20 years in New York City, including being on the ground at September 11th, 2001 at Ground Zero. He suffered permanent health conditions and effects because of his time there as a detective. He helped found an organization for Latino police officers in New York City. He was a member here of the Knights of Columbus at St. Mark's Catholic Church, seemed like an amazing guy. And it goes to show you that our workers at Heart, you know, just the lives they've led before they came on with us and the other lives they have, they're all remarkable. But Luis, who passed on, gosh, about a month ago, I believe, about five weeks ago, was especially unique, given his service as a first responder in New York City on September 11th. Was a good guy. I've gotten to know his family, still getting to know them. I've reached out to them at coffee with his fiancee about a week ago in Wesley Chapel, just a good guy. So I'll let you all know whenever that is, we're looking at early October. Next, this is why I did want to speak. As you guys know, Tampa City Council, we passed the second reading of the budget in the city of Tampa budget and we passed by a four to three vote the funds that would fund Route One for Heart. That was the increased route numbers from 30 minutes to 15 minutes and making the route fare free for the time that was requested and the amount that was requested. The Applicable Committee met on this after the first budget hearing about two weeks ago. And again, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, seemed, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who was there, seemed imminible to the idea, so long as Heart was not burdened in any way fiscally, Heart's staff would find that an additional $150,000 had to be appropriated by the city of Tampa because of paratransit federal mandates, we funded that. So with the information that I have, and I will defer to Mr. Willetts, I know he's here somewhere, there you go, hey, sir, and CEO Drainville, this is something that is 100% funded by the city of Tampa and I wanted to see if there were any questions from what I see of board members, obviously within meetings, I can't talk to anybody outside of here, there is support of this. By support, I mean, we'll take the money, city of Tampa, right? So long as Heart doesn't have to spend any funds on that whatsoever. And the committee did a really good job bringing up issues that I'll be frank, maybe I'm just a tax and spend guy, whatever, right? I didn't think about more fiscally-minded folks and that's why it's so important to have different kinds of perspective in a room. And they came up with some really good safeguards that I believe City Council took up. I strongly support it. I don't know if there should be a vote of support for this, the thing speaks for itself, we took the money, we're accepting it. Justin, I didn't know if you wanted to come up, sir, if you, there you are, if you wanted to supplement what I said, if there was anything.
No, just that the second item we took to City Council was an estimate of the paratransit trips that occur within the boundary and per FTA, we do have to provide those at no cost as well. My staff looked into that. We provided that estimate and council approved that as well, so we are all covered and it's a, it's a good proposal. If it wasn't, I probably would have been up here saying thank you, but no, from the planning perspective. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but it's all been discussed at length at this point.
Thank you, sir. And also, I don't remember if I did this, Councilman Hurtak was the one who brought this forward and fought for this and this passed by a four to three vote. So there was a lot of discussion on Tampa City Council, but I wanted to see if there were any questions or comments. Again, we discussed it in the committee, some committee, some folks who are not committee members, obviously myself, Vice Chair Rosel, and others were there to try to gain information and speak, et cetera. So I wanted to open up the floor to see if there were any questions or comments additionally.
I do.
Yes, sir.
I know we say we're accepting it, but are we going to be presented what the inter-local agreement is?
Yeah, I think the next step would be just to develop the MOU with the city of Tampa in the short term to prepare us to initiate it in January on the 3rd or the 5th, whatever the first day of the new markup would be.
And that, that's when you intend to kick off?
The pilot project.
The pilot project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that would dictate how we're reimbursed from the city. We're suspecting it would be like a quarterly billing to the city to be reimbursed for the services.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Director Hartfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had also asked for our, a communication strategy around this delivery.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Director McAuliffe, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think I was going to say the same thing, that one of the other issues I think was making sure that there was an appropriate plan to market and roll that, roll that out and expectation for if the funding was not there for another year. And so I guess if Mr. Drainville can attest to the fact that we're satisfied with, those things will be met as well.
Absolutely. And I've discussed with staff, we can show the communications plans well in advance when, if this is not going to be subsidized further, you know, it's a one-year pilot and then that's it. So we'll have a communications plan ready to go.
Anyone else?
I have one more question after, after her.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks for the communication plan and it does include communication to the other routes that are connecting with Route One.
All information regarding this pilot will be out to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
Who were the three no votes and what were their objections?
Good question. So one of them is here, Councilman Henderson, I don't want to speak on her behalf, Councilman Bill Carlson and Councilman Charlie Miranda. I, I don't want to speak on folks' behalf, maybe you can reach out, I don't know, Councilman Henderson, if you wanted to explain, ma'am.
On my behalf, no problem. It's not that, you know, equity is, was my issue and the funding source. The city is not responsible for funding. funding source. The city is not responsible for funding Hart in any way. And so I was in disagreement with it for that reason. Not only that, it is a Band-Aid. We, we really had to reallocate the funds. It wasn't like it was just sitting free and clear to be available for this pilot project. That was another reason. And you can find justification for supporting other routes, Nebraska Avenue's route. You know, we could have justified that one. This one, it has the highest ridership. I understand that. I saw that in the report. But the kids that ride to Jefferson High School on the bus on the west side of town, you know, could use a free ride. So one of the public comments to date, the exact words were equitable access for everyone, and that is actually not true. It is not equitable access for everyone. It is, you know, for Route One and Route One only. I, what I can appreciate about it is the benefit to Route One, that it is going to provide for those riders. And I'll just leave it at that. But the funding source was not free money just sitting around in the city of Tampa. Our $1.8 billion budget is stretched in a variety of ways. So it wasn't for a lack of, if it was just empathy and, and, you know, I would definitely, you know, support it, but it was not an emotional decision for me. It was one of being fiscally responsible. Thank you, Chair.
Guess I'll watch the video for the other two.
It's fun. I would actually encourage everyone to watch it for the budget hearing. You know, some, what, what I consider to be where attacks were made on this board, that, you know, to quote Merle Haggard, they walked on my fighting side. I was not happy about that. And I called them cheap shots from cheap seats. Because you know what? I like this board. And serving on this board is not easy. Politically, you serve on this board, you're going to take hits. Because we are, in my opinion, an area that's very underfunded with regards to mass transit, and our board, our organization suffers because of that. And we try our best to do that, to remedy that. So yeah, I would encourage everyone to watch it. It was, it was interesting. So I would encourage everyone to watch it. And I thank Councilwoman Henderson. I don't mean to put you on the spot, ma'am. I appreciate that. And by the way, Councilwoman Henderson said nothing bad about this board. So God bless her. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'll just say for future, if the city has any funding for their '25, '26 budget, as everyone knows, we're still trying to get some bus shelters and benches throughout District Three where we have majority of our riders. So please put that in your budget. Councilwoman Henderson, I know you hear me, so consider that we both share that same district together.
And if I may, I did request that in CRA. So that, that, I'll check on where the status of that is because that is obviously a big deal, a big deal. Anyone else? Great. Okay, great. So I, again, I wanted to bring this up because to me, this is a tremendous victory for Hart, a tremendous victory for mass transit, and the people that we all serve here, you know, people who work really hard, work 40, 45, 50 hours a week and take that bus to get to the VA, get the doctor's appointments, get to work and to come home and raise your kids and get up the next day to do it all again. And to me, this is a real victory for that. I'm very excited for when the first ride's going to be, probably in January, I think, of next year or so. I think it's a great thing. So I'll be honest, when Councilwoman Hurtak brought it up, I went, man, why did I think of that? So, you know, y'all, that ever happened to you guys, it's funny. And I was glad to see, by the way, that, that we also had to increase paratransit. Because before I found out about that, I was talking to CEO Drainville, and I went, man, why didn't I ask for more paratransit for people with disabilities through the city budget? And then the federalis make us do that. So I'm, I was happy to see that. So that's it from the directors or from this board chair's report. And I will hand it off, if I may, to CEO Drainville. And I need to leave in five minutes. So pardon me.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to be, I'll be really brief. I do want to, I do want to thank the city of Tampa Council for approving the funding to subsidize the free fare on the Route One and the paratransit service associated with that route. I also want to thank the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissions for approving the 250,000 funding for the purchase of paratransit vehicles. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on is the 401A plan update. As previously reported, there remains one unresolved issue from the annual financial audit, the dissolution of the 401A retirement plan. Staff with the support of legal counsel, human resources, and external consultants have been actively working on the issue. So as of September 16th, our estimated to empower a former plan administrator, all required documentation dissolved, to dissolve the 401K retirement account. As of September 18th, all notice letters were sent to empower to the two remaining participants to close their accounts. By November 1st, the deadline for all participants to roll over or close accounts. So it's one of the, I just wanted to brief the board on that previous 401A account. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Chair's report. Sorry, since we're a little out of sync here. In the past, the board members requested that the Hart Board meeting calendar be approved by the board for a year ahead. It is also consistent with the practices of other government agencies. The proposed meeting schedule is included in your packets. The meeting frequency and cycle remains the same. Board regular meetings on first Monday of the month and committee meetings on third Monday of the month. The only exceptions are in January due to the holidays, July during the summer vacation month, and in September due to budget, budget public hearings. Is there any discussion by the board members on the proposed 2025 calendar year meeting schedule? Okay, there being none. Next is Route One service improvement. Chair introduces this topic?
I think we already have gone through that.
Sorry. Long day, everybody. I was attorney for half of today and then a politician the rest. Next is the Hart Board Council's report. Go ahead.
I don't have anything to report today.
There you go. Next, the Hart Board Committee Report is provided in Section 11. Reports from Hart Board member representatives are provided in 12. Information reports are in 13. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to commend, there were seven, seven employees that received an award or recognition for the 1 million mile with no accidents, no preventable accidents. And that is very hard to achieve. I think it takes about 14 years in order to receive 1 million miles without any accidents. So I just wanted to bring that forward, that previously there were 14 or 19 last year and then seven this year. So I want to commend the people that earned that recognition and share with the board because that's significant to have achieved a measure such as that. Just great recognition across the board.
Amen. Thank you. Yep. And we were there, and the office of Board Member Henderson was there, and it's great. I commend the, imagine a million miles with no accidents. That's wonderful. You know, I'm 46 and I've never been in an accident because I drive like a 90-year-old. So maybe that's their, maybe that's their secret. Who knows? Any other new business? Okay, if I may, unless if there's anything else from anyone, we adjourn the meeting. This concludes all business for today. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, and everyone stay safe and God bless you. Just in time. I got, I got my son Uber.